You. Following Benton City, City Council meeting to order, September second, two thousand twenty five. We have a roll now, please.
Councilwoman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilman Sandretto.
Here.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilwoman Alcazar.
Here.
Councilman Stevenson.
Here.
Thank you. Well, pledge of allegiance and Steve, can you lead us in this?
I pray to be. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve.
It was crowded.
Consent agenda. Are there any questions?
I didn't see anything. The motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Reed, aye.
Alcazar, aye.
The motion passes. The discussion on the agenda, we're going to add an item under new business to deal with the commercial development down to the east side of the Dollar General for discussion on what, what might be acceptable there for the funnel area. And it needs to be similar to what else is there, what it should look like. And we'll add that under new business. And are there any other items that need to be addressed on the agenda?
I just, just a house.
What?
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this, but just a replacement house in the flood zone.
That is, that is not an agenda item, so you address that in visitor comments, okay? Any motions?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Reed, aye.
Alcazar, aye.
Agenda is approved as amended. Visitor comments, any visitors like to make comments on a non-agenda item, please go up the microphone, introduce yourself.
If I may, and I will, if you guys each copy of this. I know this moratorium has been around for a while and it seems like it's been around for way too long. I've done, I've been a contractor for a long time and.
You want to sit down?
Sit down and can you give me your name?
We have to record you, sorry.
That's okay.
Swear to tell the truth.
Your name?
Dustin Gillespie. This is a project on, on First Ave, down by the river, and accepting the zoning maps of two thousand twenty five, which I know has been a delay with the moratorium. But when can we push it finally through? I've got everything done from the base maps to the, to, first of all, if we could, and that won't take too much time, but if you can look at where the, the rezoning of the street vacate is, was terribly done per George, and I like George, but it's cutting off everybody's living rooms. And so anyway, we're replacing a house with a new one, but yet, and we have our, I've done plenty of stuff in the, in the flood zone. So what is taking so long for us to just get it approved?
The project?
What I've done in this, in Benton City, Westfitch and everywhere else, I've done plenty of flood zone projects. But what is, why is there a moratorium when these people have been waiting months and months and months and months? And year after year after year, they're.
The moratorium should be over next month.
Well, I've been told that though for four months.
We've been waiting on, the ordinance is written and put together in May of this year. We've been waiting on the attorney to finish, the attorney review the process of it. We're still waiting on him to approve it, to bring it to council.
And I can appreciate that and, but the attorney is, it's like, it's almost like a, like a backseat thing to where, you know, I understand there's like five or six applications, but my clients have been waiting and they're improving the tax basis. It's not like it's a new piece property, it's tearing down an old place, putting a new place. And so what is it we need to do to say, first of all, the, the street vacate that was done terribly wrong back in late nineteen nineties and to where they took everyone's half living room. So that's part of it is, is which I'm working with Zach on that to get, to get that fixed. But it's like, everything just is going like in slow motion in the city of Benton City. And I've been doing business here for a long time. And so when can we finally say, okay, we have, we have our base flood elevation, we, we know what we need to do in the base flood elevation, we know what we need to do for flood elevation. It's the smallest flood elevation possible, but when do we finally say, okay, let's pay the attorney and, and and let's get this solved? Because that's what being told is, it's.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to move the attorney on the fastest I can on that, so, okay? And this is an ongoing discussion. There were plans to try to have that to the council this evening. It did not materialize, did not happen. I apologize for.
No, and then you're, you know, you're a good guy. You called me like a year and a half ago and, and I helped you with another gal and didn't even know you. And so um, just, it's like.
It's frustrating.
Common sense. It's like the house is there, it could flood, we want to demo that house, put a new house in there, raise the tax basis. And so, you know, someone needs to have a little motion here, not just an email and not just a voicemail to say, let's have common sense. Who needs to push the button to say, let's move? That's all I'm asking. It's, you know, I, it's not a big hit for me. It's not like a bunch of money for me, but it's like, I've been working on this damn, spent thousands of dollars with, with surveys. And so even the, the street vacate right here, which makes no sense, it cuts off half this guy's living room. If you see page one right there, that, that square, I've been told for two years that's going to be fixed. And if you can see that, if you guys would, on page one, how do you guys vacate a street and then make a mistake? It's not your, you guys didn't cause a problem, inherited the problem, but we can't take half their property on a street vacate that makes no sense. And so that's all I'm asking is just let's, what do I need to do to move the process along?
It's, it's, it's what I've got to keep working on. The goal is to have this all done and finished next month. I, I've worked on it. I've worked on it every month since May. Every month I made requests.
If I, if I can ask you, what's, what's the holdup?
The attorney's time to address it.
Are we contracting out the attorney?
We contract them out. And we have to have a municipal attorney.
But, but they're, and they're accepting the two thousand twenty five flood zone, right? So I guess I don't understand because I'm, I'm a pusher, but I'm, I'm also a gentleman. And so can I contact the attorney and maybe push a few buttons?
Please don't.
I wouldn't, I don't even know who it is, but, but you've always been a good guy, Lynn, and then, but.
He represents our city and a number of other cities.
But what's the holdup?
It's time. To handle it.
Time of what? Why these people watch things go up in price and everything else? It's, it's not like let's, let's, let's develop, do property, it's let's replace a home that increases the tax base in Benton City, increases private taxes. They've cleaned up their whole lot, but what does it take to get someone to act? Because I, that's why I'm here tonight is because I want someone to act.
Check with me every, check with me the first and next month, get with me, come in, we can visit, I'll try to let you know if I've moved this thing along or not. I, I, I wrote the ordinance myself and I've been waiting for him to get through it, to approve it, and it was done with the help of KMA and Department of Ecology on the wording.
Is there resistance?
What?
Is there resistance from the attorney, the resistance?
A what?
Resistance.
Is there resistance?
Nope. You just got to get to it, read it.
Or. I'm a doer and my mom always told me I should have been a politician. And so but Lynn, please, just.
No.
Does not make me rich to sell these people, finish every house, but they're, they're, they just want some action. They've been told for ten, twelve months. This can be lifted, due to be lifted, being lifted. So what is the occasion of why it's not lifted?
Changing anything. He hasn't even gotten to start reading it yet.
Well, maybe we need to switch attorneys. Sorry, I don't mean to say, but it just, I, I went, I like to get things fulfilled. And so I'm not saying you're not doing your job, Lynn, I don't, but just shit or get off the pot, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you for listening, okay?
Thank you.
If you guys read that stuff, I appreciate it. I will call you, Lynn, okay?
Promise. Uh. We have a confirmation of a Crystal Guzman, did I get that right?
I think you have a proclamation before that, don't you?
Well.
The proclamation?
Oh, yes. Sorry about the high Mr. Proclamation. Thank you, Dave. We have a constitution, a proclamation acknowledging September is the constitutional month. Will we approve that?
Uh, I think all we have to do is read it and then approve it. The, and it's Constitution Week. If you'd like me to read it, I can read it.
Read it.
Uh. Columbia River Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, proclamation, Constitution Week. Where is the Constitution of the United States of America signed on September seventeen seventeen eighty seven, stands as the foundation of the nation's law, our nation's laws, liberties and democratic principles. And Constitution Week provides an opportunity for all citizens to reflect on the enduring strength of our founding document and to recommit to the responsibilities of active citizenship. And the city of Benton City recognizes the importance of civic education, encourages all residents, young and old, to study the Constitution, engage in the democratic process. And whereas organizations such as the Columbia River Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, have long championed the observance of the Constitution Week, could promote the awareness and appreciation of our nation's heritage. Now therefore, I, Len Burton, Mayor of the City of Benton City, do proclaim the week of September seventeenth through September twenty third, two thousand twenty five as Constitution Week in Benton City, Washington, or all citizens to join in celebrating the freedoms guaranteed by the Constitution and to reflect upon the responsibilities that come with those freedoms and witness whereof. I have here unto set my hand to cause the seal of the city of Benton City effects, effect this second day of September, two thousand twenty five. And I accept that, a motion to accept the proclamation.
I second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Reed, aye.
Alcazar, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, staff reports, we have a clerk one position coming on board to work in the front office. Veronica is moved down to the other end to assist the bonding department for our plans. And so she's here to be approved as a new employee. Want to come up here, Crystal, if I have any questions for you or the microphone?
Hello.
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 I don't know that I have any questions per se, and this is already a established position or not?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Any discussion? Motion to confirm Crystal Guzman, the city clerk one.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Reed, aye.
Alcazar, aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Super, super easy.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, you don't, you don't have to say your name.
Uh.
Thank you.
Any, uh, staff reports from council members on committee meetings?
Hmm. Since our last meeting, I think the only thing I've had is good roads. Um, we had some legislative updates and, uh, committee assignments for getting ready for our elections next month. That's it.
I attended the Benton County Mosquito Control Board, um, and it sounds like West Nile is starting to pop up in some different areas. Um, it sounds like for the first time we've got a positive case, um, three to five samples out of Columbia Park, out of Kenwick, um, have tested positive for West Nile. So, uh, we have about five locations that have now um, in Benton County have now, um, received some West Nile mosquitoes.
Thank you.
Chamber of Commerce, going ahead with the Benton City Days planning. Nothing really new to report. They're just going through, getting their vendors and whatnot lined out and for the parade and they need some bodies. So I'm going to try to go down there and just help them set up and do what I can.
Thank you. Do you want to reveal it? You're going to be racing up.
Oh, yeah.
Lawn mowers.
Yeah, I got tempted into it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna enter the lawnmower race. I don't plan to win, but I plan to have a good time. And yes, I have already purchased a Ricky Bobby racing suit. It was thirty-five dollars on Amazon. I couldn't say no.
Bill, Bill will be there with the ambulance.
He's just sitting on a mower. He's not pushing it, right?
If you ain't first, you're last.
I went.
I'm typo and I don't lift in the turn, so have it ready.
I attended the irrigate, Coyone irrigation meeting on Wednesday. They are in the process of getting ArcGIS system going for mapping out the irrigation system. Uh, a lot of the pipes in the past were located by, what did he tell you where they were last time? And so that was, that's been a challenge. Um, so now they're in a search and find mode. Uh, they got the flow meter working with no leaks and the pump stations are working really well. They are looking tentatively at a shut off date of October fifteenth. And they did mention, they were talking about the widening of the street and that they were waiting for you to get back in touch with them about that and locating their pipes.
I'll get with Randy.
Okay.
So, you know, they asked you, we approved a resolution for J U B to survey the street.
Right.
We have not surveyed it yet. I, I don't have a date of that survey, but I know it will be down there quite with Nathan, identifying certain things we need to have marked out and trying to identify the width of the street where it comes into Babs. We believe the street is fifty feet wide. We're on our right of way coming into Babs, which means we have significant encroachment of property. And there are issues there that we're going to have to address. And then the irrigation district has a number of valves within our right of way that we're going to identify locations. They're going to have to address those as we work to figure out a plan for Sixth Street.
Okay. Talked to Randy, yeah.
No, yeah.
Because I, we won't have another meeting for another three, two, two weeks, but I'll let him know if you haven't gotten, that's what I'm.
Yeah, we're working on that. Bill?
Nothing new to report.
Awesome, awesome. How's the grandchild?
Wonderful as always. Just celebrated the first year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a, a report. I invited the Washington State Game Department here. If you want to come up to the microphone, introduce yourselves. Explain to the council why you're here and what we have going on and what we're going to be doing. And there is, in your, uh, in the packet, there's a section on star grass, water star grass and the river.
Wonderful. Um, hi, I'm Cassandra Weeks. I'm a habitat biologist with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. I have a couple colleagues with me here in the audience, Mike Livingston, our regional director, and Tori Makis, area habitat biologist down here. Um, and so thanks for inviting us here to speak with you tonight about our water stargress removal pilot project here in the Lower Yakima River. I'm going to provide just kind of a brief overview about the project and then we're glad to answer any questions that you might have. So as I'm sure you're all well aware, um, the Lower Yakima River is experiencing prolific growth of water star grass. It's an aquatic plant that is thriving due to historic and current, uh, changes in the Yakima River that are further exacerbated by the three consecutive years of drought conditions here in the Yakima Basin. Water stargress is currently forming dense mats across much of the lower river, impacting fish passage, salmon spawning habitat, water quality, water conveyance, and recreational river use. Water stargress can be especially concerning because it displaces false Chinook salmon from spawning in their historic areas of the Yakima River, particularly in the reach below Prosser Dam and right here in the Benton City reach. The plant's density slows salmon down, forcing them to spend more time in warmer waters and move further upstream to spawn, exposing their offspring to increased predation and lethal temperatures. We're excited that beginning today, September second, the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, in collaboration with the Yakima Nation, will lead a project to remove water stargress in two reaches of the Lower Yakima River. The first that we're focusing on is near the Yakima Nation's Prosser Hatchery. And the second reach is here in the Benton City area. For the Benton City reach, we will be using the Benton City Boat Launch for equipment ingress and egress and working from the boat launch upstream approximately one and a half miles. We anticipate beginning work in this reach of the river as early as next week and work may continue through the end of the month. We will use a spider excavator with a rake implement to rake the water stargress from the river. And then it will be removed by a long reach excavator that is parked on the bank. The water stargress biomass will either be left on site or hauled offsite for composting. And we'll have WDFW staff on site during the removal efforts. WDFW and partners will be using a drone to monitor pre, during, and post-project conditions as well as conducting Chinook spawning surveys after the project is completed. So this project included much coordination between federal, state, and local government agencies to acquire all of the necessary permits to do the project and also coordinating on the project logistics. I really appreciate the collaboration that I've had with Benton City staff um, on the use of the boat launch and placement of some of the water stargress biomass on site. Um, so thank you so much for all the coordination and collaboration from Benton City staff. We've created a blog that's on our website. Um, I sent out the link last week, so some of you may have already received it. And I'm available to answer any questions that may come up as well as my colleagues here.
Is there any information that's going to be able for us to get out to the public so that they know? Because there'll be tons of people saying what's going on down at the boat launch.
Yeah, um, of course you are welcome to share our blog that has a lot of information in it. Kind of the who, what, when, where, why? And then we also have two signs that we will post at the Benton City Boat Launch that I've, you know, discussed with staff that are just really simple that say the work is in progress. So those are what we have developed right now. If you are looking for something different, I'm interested to hear because I'm happy to collaborate on that.
That sounds good. It's just whenever something's going on, people, it, it's a small community gets out that.
Absolutely.
Will the boat launch be accessible still for the public or will it be shut down during that time?
It will still be available for the public. It's something that we've worked closely on. So we have agreed to use a boat launch on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays. Um, as we were told that was, um, you know, the least impactful. It's when the, there's the least amount of recreation at and from the boat launch. So we're planning to work Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays. And our efforts will be focused more on the northern section of the boat launch. And so the southern, um, side of the boat launch, including the access to the river, will still be open. So we'll have our, um, work separated.
Okay.
Is there, is there any secondary use that agriculture or somebody might be able to do with your star grass?
That is a great question. So we've actually partnered with a private landowner who has offered to take some of the biomass and incorporate it into composting um, for use on site on their, you know, agricultural practices. So that is an option that we will be using.
So have you done this kind of removal in other areas and?
Not specifically with the spider excavator. Um, Benton Conservation District has been doing water stargress removal using a harvester for several years. Um, our work is complimentary to that. They're also a partner on this. It is our first time using a spider excavator to do the water stargress removal. We're pretty excited about it. We specifically chose this piece of equipment because of the low PSI that it has. It has four independently operated legs. Um, you know, it has wheel rubber tires. Um, and so we specifically chose this piece of equipment for the pilot project. But we're really excited to see how effective it is on removing the water stargress. And so that's why we'll be doing kind of the pre, during, and post-monitoring.
And then other places where you have removed the star grass before, how fast has, does it come back or what's been the impact when it's been removed?
It's a great question that I am not quite sure.
Sorry.
Troy Makis, WFW, um, maybe there?
Yep.
Um, yeah, uh, we've found that, uh, it's kind of in preliminary stages right now, but areas that they've done with the water stargass harvester, they've seen it not come back immediately the next year. Um, because of funding and it being an early project, there's not a whole lot of data in our section on multiple years in a row, but we do see a market improvement when we remove it because you're trying to get the roots and, you know, up out of the ground as well as the plant itself. It reproduces off roots like a lot of grasses do. So we're trying to get all that stuff up and out. And we do see market improvement when we do that. And it also allows water to scour, which takes away a lot of that sediment, which it uses to grow.
You want to comment on the effect of a high river runoff? We have a normal moisture year with high river runoff and how it helps with star grass.
Um, yeah, I mean, water stargass is a native plant to this area. Um, it is starting to grow a little more here now with there being backwater from the dams and also a lot clearer water because we've cleaned up the Yakima River a lot. Um, but historically there would be, you know, spring freshets that would take, you know, a lot of water down the system and scour things out. We don't have that as much right now. One of the projects that's in the works as a potential thing to look at with the, um, Lower Colum, or Lower Yakima River Water Star Grass Working Group is actually to, uh, create an area that we channelize a little bit to create a scouring effect to see if that works to help get stargus out. But it is theorized that more scouring flows will, you know, take it out because that's more what it was naturally.
So when we have more moisture, the stargass level is lower than when it's drier?
Um, that's tricky because we've got, the way we've stocked up the river and we have, you know, dams way upstream and they, they, even if we get a lot of moisture, they don't necessarily have a lot of water coming down. But I, I do think that it does clear it out when we actually get the flow.
We get higher river flows. It can scour up the bed, part of natural processes. I like to call them habitat forming flows. Um, you know, that'll scour the roots. And so that's what naturally would have occurred. We would have got a lot more scour. Um, we don't have as much anymore.
The, the other issue you don't mention is the effect on the oxygen content in the river for salmon and what it does to the oxygen content.
Yeah, um, might go back to you, but, um, yeah, there, there've been several people studying the water quality impacts associated with water stargress. Um, and we do see high fluctuations in dissolved oxygen being just one of the metrics. And that certainly impacts, um, you know, all of our native fishes in the river.
He's the fisherman, if you didn't pick up on that. And then I teach and we talk about humans' impact on the environment. So this is something that's local that we can talk about in school.
There's, um, some great reports out as well that I'd love to share with you.
Okay.
I, I don't know if I'm watching the same craft you're talking about that the spider boat, whatever. Uh, last summer I was down at Horn Rapids Park and I'd seen the same crafts here at, at Sportsman's Park. And they were, had wheels that would pull up grass from the river.
Yeah.
And when I was down at Horn Rapids Park, I was talking to the guy and he says, yeah, he says, we're, we're working as fast as we can because he says it's really backing up here because the water is so slow because of the there's a slight dam there for irrigation. But he said, uh, I took a load out and I was putting it on the guy's farm. And he said, there were so many crawdads in there. He says, I said, from now on, I'm going through the grass before I give it to the farmer. And he, he said he ate crawdad for weeks.
I was going to say, I can cook them really good. You'd be there and you'd grab them out.
Not even brought in the Yakima. But is that, is that same craft?
Yes, that's the water stargrass harvester, which is the complementary craft to the spider excavator that we're using. That's the one's been working for a little bit. And yeah, like you saw, this water stargrass is a great place for lots of predators for salmon. Bass, catfish, grayfish, all love it. It's a great nursery for them. So it's, it's a great predator gauntlet for the salmon, especially the juveniles trying to come down straight.
Well, don't go over the dam because if I were to park around, I'd lost the big boat.
Any more, any other questions?
I wish you luck.
And again, thank you so much to the Benton City staff. We've collaborated with several folks and it's been, you know, a great partnership to be able to work through logistics with the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing your helpers.
Yes.
Thank you. I know no public hearings. We have a resolution 202542. This is Safe Built Washington. I'm going to get Zach to comment on this, what we're doing here and why we're doing it.
Hi, guys. Zach, building and planning here in Benton City. So Safe Built's going to be taking the place of BRPRC, which was our previous third-party fire and commercial review service. They'll be handling our fire marshal duties, advanced commercial fire reviews, pretty much anything that I do not have the ability or can't review myself now. Hoping to use them for backup inspection, a few other services they have, in case everyone want to not be at the office.
You want to join my app to our role?
Oh, yes, our previous ERPRC is no longer going to be working in Washington. They're going to move to other states that are so restrictive, just for business moves. So it'll be moving out of Oregon, California, Washington, and Colorado. So we chose Safe Built because they're the most reputable one you can really get out of the list. All the local guys here in Tri-Cities are using them as well, along with Prosser, pretty much everybody in the county, including the county. So we're going to do the same here, hopefully not too often, but just to have as a backup and for fire marshal services.
I have no questions on that.
Make the motion.
Well, let me go all the way back. I have it if you want. Go for it. I move to approve Resolution 2025-42, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Safe Built Washington LLC.
I second. All in favor?
Sandra, I.
Walter, I.
Stephen, I.
Reed, I.
Alka, S R I.
The motion passes. We have another resolution 202543. This is a contract, consulting contractor Steve Zetz to assist with the, our planning commission and to help with city planning as a consultant.
How much is that?
Fifty dollars an hour.
Thank you. I had that. And when's that? How's that billed?
What?
How is that billed? Is it just each time they?
It's normally going to be billed to the developer that we're involved with.
Any other questions?
Consulting in what way?
Like what? His expertise is understanding the current state laws of zoning and planning and that, which we are not, we're struggling to be up to speed with all the context of that as a city. And that's what his expertise is. He's been doing it for a long, long time. Currently, he works for Seela. He lives here in Benton City. He resides here in town. He's agreed to help us for what is a very, very, very nominal fee.
Mayor, this is Scott Mahoney. I just wanted to check, is the, is the draft resolution and agreement, do you have that in the packet? I looked online and it had made its way in there at that point, so I just wanted to check on that.
Because I didn't get it until I got back ready for.
It did not make it into the online.
Did not make it. Do you have a copy or?
Yeah, I've got copies if everybody wants one because it didn't come in until after I had booked for the day and came back.
No, understood, and I thought that might be the case. I just wanted to make sure I understood, you know, if you had it available or not, so.
And is there going to be a cap on how much?
We currently don't have a cap on it.
I think there needs to be something put in place that there is a certain amount that you can't go over.
I'm going to speak to this. If it's being passed on to each developer as he consults.
Passed on to the involved developers.
Then it doesn't really affect our budget. And I know Steve's planning expertise will assist the city greatly. I don't know where you would set the cap because depending on the development, five thousand dollars could be eaten up fairly quickly.
So if I get this correct, we, we don't pay it. He goes after the contractor pays it.
We build a contractor.
So there is a delay. We will have to front the money to pay for his. And then we wait until the contractor pays us. So there could be a time lapse.
Okay. How, how it works, it's like any work that we do, whether it be, I don't care whether it's an engineer or anything. So any of that time gets put into our system. When they come to get their, their permit or pay for their permit, they have to pay all of those fees at that time, correct? That's how that works. So they don't get their permits or anything until all that stuff is paid.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to say that in the contract at all, that, that it's billed to the contractor? We just, no, I'm looking and trying to go through it pretty quick, sorry. Does it say in here that it gets passed on to the contractor?
I have not read it. I mean, I didn't.
It states in our fee schedule that those fees are assessed to the contractor.
Okay, that's what I.
We had a regular staff planning purpose and it was full-time on the staff. His fees would be charged to the contractor.
Okay.
The same way with engineering, the same way with Zach's fees or, or, or the Public Works Director fees, those are all assessed to the contractor.
Okay, I just wanted to double check because it says in here that compensation for the performance of services is billed to the city and that the city has to pay it by the, within 20 calendar days. And so that's why I wanted to just double check. And this is good for a year? Is that what I'm reading? Okay. I don't have any other questions. I was just making some notes. Sorry. Does anybody else have any questions? Do you want me to? I move to approve Resolution 2025-43, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Steve Zetz for planning services.
Hold, hold a second.
Hold on a sec.
I guess, I, I guess my thing is that it was just something that I wasn't overly informed of because it wasn't something that we could technically read. So I, I think that's where I'm hesitant.
Okay, I'm going to abstain from the vote because if we reach a vote, because I have a personal relationship with Mr. Zetz. Mr. Zetz has worked at the city of Prosser for the last 20 years. Have you seen the increase?
Do we need a second and then have a discussion?
Well, we couldn't get a second, so I'm just going to go into discussion. If you see the economic impacts that the city of Prosser received from Mr. Zetz's input, and now he's at the city of Seela doing the same thing. He's highly involved in community. He has told me he didn't actually want any money for a consultation fee. He was just going to help. However, that creates a quandary as far as legal obligation. He went out purposely to get an LLC and a business license to perform this work for the city for the hopes of improving Benton City's economic status.
He used to be on our planning commission.
He was.
And did a very good job until there were things that led.
Some conflicts with previous administration. And we can say that over and over again, out of this office a hundred times.
In that case, are we still able to second?
I was going to say, I don't have.
Can I, can I, can I chime in if you don't mind? I, I personally know Mr.
He wants to talk.
Okay.
I personally know Mr. Zetz. I've met him on several occasions and stuff. Great guy, outstanding member of the community and everything. I don't think that's the problem with the, the second vote here. We don't have this in our packet. This is not complete. And I think that's the, the concern and the shyness. It has nothing to do with Mr. Zetz's reputation. But if this is going to be in the city council agenda, it needs to be complete to where we can see it and approve it.
And I was going to add that if it, if it makes people feel better, we could, I would think, table it till we have time to review it. Like I said, I was going through it really quickly just now, scanning for some of the questions that I had.
The next council meeting, not at all.
You can, if that's how you want to do it. I mean.
If that's what you guys feel comfortable with.
Well, just table it the next council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. This came in from Sherry late. I mean, it came in after, came in after four o'clock today.
Mayor, this is, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
Hang on. So a matter of procedure, first of all, there's a motion on the floor.
Can I withdraw it or?
It's already been seconded. So at this particular point, I believe we need to take a vote on it and let it die. Or.
She can rescind the way she can.
Or you can motion to table, somebody can make an amendment to motion to table until the next meeting.
I will amend my motion to ta, and then table it till the next meeting so that we all have time to review the contract. So everyone feels comfortable with it.
Does the second agree?
I agree.
You agree, Bill?
I agree.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay.
And I want to note that I abstained.
We have a one item, one unfinished business. We have an item to discuss on a development that's been proposed down on the east side of the Dollar General. I kind of put this on hold and I'll let Zach talk as to why and what input we want from the council on this. This is kind of falls under an administrative review process that I would like the council to give input on how they would like improvements to look there. Either greenery or, or that.
All right. So the applicant's name is Carl Sarver. He purchased the property next to Dollar General. He's hoping to make a business similar to Beaverton Market. So like a, not quite a construction yard, but a materials yard, bark, gravel, sand, et cetera. Maybe eventually some trees, plants, just a general sales yard. The big request where he's began this process was we have a lot of frontage requirements, especially on 225 commercial zone and just the area all inclusively. Part of that is a sidewalk going the whole front of that property, similar to Dollar Generals, which should be a picture kind of in the back of the smaller papers. There are apologies on that. He was asking if the city would be willing to waive our water and sewer connection fees, which would be roughly 7,250. Because he's running into a financial burden being able to do the frontage increases with a swell drainage rock sidewalk, the floodproof fencing, and the site obscuring fencing, all which he's willing to do. But he's going to run into a financial issue at some point, but still wants to proceed. So he was requesting, which is also on an email on the third page back from the top there, if there was any way we could find some concessions with him there. Biggest one would be, like I said, the waiver of the water sewer. And then he was asking for a year to complete the site obscuring fence on the back of the property. So I, he is aware that we would require the sidewalk and the street frontage improvements. He was also in the hope of he could not do grass. He just wanted to throw that out there. In a small proposal, he has it written on the top of his site plan there. He didn't get it into the formal request, but just to save us not having to jump back on it on a later date, if those considerations can be met. So it'd be a year to do the site obscuring fence, the waiver of the fees, and then just a question on if anyone was hard set on the grass or if he could do three-inch rock, which is what we have in a lot of other places in town.
We currently have grass there and required grass for the development of the Dollar General. Because it's so high visibility coming into town.
So second wise, this lot does meet all the conditions. He's okay to use this. He runs under Section 8 of our C1 commercial code, which is sales business yards of this type of nature. He'll meet all the lot requirements, zoning requirements. And he will have to connect to water and sewer stated in the request for the waiver.
That question for you?
Yeah.
Entrance and egress to that property, how is that going to work?
So if you look, oh, I'm sorry, Billy, I don't have this. So there is, it feels like a first bigger pager. They, the access actually goes through Dollar General's paved area.
Okay, and, and he, and he's working, he's working that contract with them?
Uh, yes, so he can't actually do that until we give him final approval because he's.
Gotcha.
Uh, you know, just trying to be financially responsible with how he's going about this. That's why we chose to go down this option and just see, like we're talking with the mayor, what would be.
Yeah, my, my concern with all commercial property is obviously fire danger. He gets a truck or something and they catch his fire. We can't block 225 to put it out, trying to get through Dollar General. Kind of had a little concern about that, but if he's, if he's within code and contract, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I need requested access to 225. You know, I told him he could still pursue that, but after, you know, letting him know the fact. Saying egress, corner, bottleneck area, being a state highway, blood zone, you name it. He's pretty much going to hit every red tape you can hit.
Correct.
To go back to going through his already approved access. So he'll pop out on the second street via the Dollar General. There is a chance that he'll have to upgrade their asphalt because they'll be bringing in some very large trucks just because they probably have a very thin pad, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
He's aware of that. That's, all these factors kind of accumulatively is how we got to this point going. I never realized I'd have to do so much to put in my construction yard. So he was asking for the concessions to see if it would be able to be something to keep moving forward. It would clean up our front entry into Benton City. It would clean up our front entry into Benton City, but also with the small caveats of the requested offers.
Perfect, thank you.
One other question is, is the council wanting to have a grass strip next to sidewalk? You know, so how wide? And what are their improvements?
Yes, I'm not overly picky about that, because we've seen the grass in front of Dollar stretcher. That is not well taken care of. So I, I'm perfectly fine with rock, because I think it's easier to maintain, especially in the. Climate that we're in. I have no issue with doing some kind of a rock.
Yeah, rock. There's a place around here that have rock and looks, they can do.
Well, that's gonna be his business, right?
Yeah, and he spells his bane reasoning too, as he was saying, you know, he lives right down there on First Street as well, so you guys are. No, um, so he's right in that area and he said the same thing. Just historically speaking, it doesn't seem like that grass does too well, so he'd rather do something that stays. More appealing all year round with a lot less upkeep. He does, it's required by city code to have a five foot strip for our commercial zones, um, in between sidewalk and his property of some kind. But anything after that would be something we'd be asking additionally. Dollar General was asked to do so. Um, they pretty much had to do. Roughly about thirty feet, um, all the way through. That is a, up to decision in council if we wanna go down the same road. There is no requirement in our C one code. It's doing for the additional strip, the extra yard. And beans that he wants to make construction yard to probably be counterproductive for what he's going for, just for squishing his area even smaller.
My major concern is the gifting of funds. And if this hasn't been run by the attorney, it needs to be run by the attorney. Cause essentially he still has to connect to water sewer, which means we're providing labor and materials to do that.
So part of this conversation we also have on Mr. Sarver was the same thing, is if council was to give it the blessing, we would run this same request by the attorney with a requirement on a timeframe of. The only timeframe that was established was the one year to do the site obscuring fence.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think we're gonna waive it. He's pretty much under the impression that he'll have to do some kind of, you know, written agreement with us, um. Of some sort memorandum of understanding. We'll be running that through either Scott or Eric.
Yeah, I, I, as far as that side obscuring fence, he can put up the same thing Dollar General did and save himself the money and pay for the other. That's an opinion. Eco blocks expensive.
He's actually doing it for the flood zone requirements that we have there. He's actually gonna be putting black wrought iron fencing in the front on a four inch picket spacing because. Floodplain rules will not let you put a regular fence anymore, um, especially in that area where he's at, even though if you look at that floodplain picture I have, it's really just the outside corners of the poor guy's property. Whole property is subject to a majority of floodplain rules now. Eco blocks was an easy way to get around the flotation and have side obstruction. Because you run into the combo of our city code saying we can't be able to see through it, we need six feet and flood code saying you can't use these materials in this area. And not have openings. So eco block was one of the only ones he could really find that wasn't reinventing the wheel for a fence. I uh, firstly, I don't think he'd be opposed if we gave another option. It's just. To do what he would like to do, which is the black wrought iron around the whole property, he wouldn't meet the site obscuring requirements I have between the residential neighborhoods. So we're. They kind of really backed into a corner on just all the flood zone and commercial and he's, he's sitting, like I said, every little bit of red tape you can do for what he's doing.
Well, eco block doesn't sound like it's very water friendly, so.
It has the channels and if they spaced it four inches apart with the channels that run under it for the bottom groove, they have a system they can do to make it. I wouldn't say floodproof, but flood path compliant. It's, it's a tricky one, to be honest.
Like the weak tubes they put behind.
Exactly, and they, they won't be able to inset these into the dirt. That way you can maintain the channel that's underneath a slight offset to them. There's, there's. A little bit of creativity and design is gonna have to go into that for a fence, um, but it's just for flood compliance and fortunately. He's gonna have to come up with something there, especially with the new adoption of the draft map, because then that entire property will be in the floodplain. So we're trying to get ahead of that as well.
Like I said, if the attorney can tell me that it's not the gifting of funds. I don't have a problem with it, however, I don't think it's the gifting of funds. Even if you said, hey, we're gonna waive the fee for connection, you still get the, the labor that we're putting in behind it, which costs money.
So they install all the meters, everything but the meters. So our labor is pretty much zero on these. They do the boxes, we make them run the line. The city doesn't do any of that.
Well, the last I knew, we installed the meters.
Yeah, the only thing to do is put the meter in, actually. It's.
Yeah.
A two jumper.
And we, the money on the meter is a thousand five hundred dollars and we have the labor of our employees at fifty plus dollars an hour. Uh, even though our fees are a little higher because of all the other pieces to connection. There is that real true cost behind there. And that is a, uh, in my opinion, a gifting of funds and I, I have a concern about that.
I think it's a valid concern. That was one me and Landon brought up as well, just to. So I guess on the end of this, if you guys are okay here at council with accepting at least the one year timeframe with the fence. We'll rehash out, see if we can come up with some kind of written agreement on the timeframe of repayment for the water sewer funds, because I do foresee this being a gifting. I can't really see a way out of it.
We, we have a couple of options there too. We can, if he has a one year timeframe, I'll go with the attorney. We may require the EBITDA bond in place to cover those costs that they have to be, that has to be done within one year. Or we'll exercise the bond to cover that.
I think Carl will be willing to do that. Um, he's just trying to find some way to keep his project moving before, you know, he hits a, a financial cap and he's, he's out too far.
I understand that and I feel for the gentleman and I wish to have the business, but I'm not gonna violate the law, so.
I'm also concerned about the precedent that it was set to. Was somebody else gonna come along and want to say, hey, it's too much, can?
I think those are all fair comments too, and that was.
We're not gonna waive.
He's more than welcome to make a, make a shot and appeal to the council, so.
You'll have to have a bond in place if he wants to procrastinate payment.
Okay, well, I'll get that all in order and we can uh, we meet on this after I get some kind of written agreement between him and I'll get everything vetted to our attorneys and. We'll get that covered on that side, as long as there wasn't any issue with the fence and everything. That was his big concern, just because. Like I said, just financial restraints and having to do all the frontage improvements were, you know, stretching pretty things.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, everyone.
Dollar General is gonna get tired of people driving through their cell.
They are, yeah. That's, that's gonna be. A little bit of point of contention there, but they uh, they did decide to build right through that easement and they could have moved it and it, it's kind of what it is now. Um. And unfortunately, that gentleman doesn't have any other way in there. We're not gonna be allowing him to go onto two twenty-five.
And we had to tell him to quit driving.
Yeah.
Speaking of two twenty-five. We really need to be exploring. I guess this falls under general council comments. Um, so are we done with this topic?
I think so.
Thank you for your help. I just wanted to agree on that input.
Before we get away from this topic, I've seen a couple of vehicles in there on that property at the end of the dollar store. Is something else going to come in?
That's what we're talking.
That's what we were just talking about.
Yeah, was that?
Kind of a beaver, little beaver bark place.
Miniature beaver bark.
Living stockyard, things like that.
Is there any way, is there any way you could put both of those uh, sewer and water things together to make? The dollar store happy and.
He needs his own, he needs his own connections.
Fortunately, we have to make them all independent unless they're one business, one owner.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he needs his own connection.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any miscellaneous council discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to discuss two twenty-five. It is my opinion that the, the mayor and the powers that be, public works. I need to readdress with the county about giving us another access to the city. Two twenty-five this morning, seven thirty. I got stopped at Second Street and it took me ten minutes to reach the roundabout. Traffic flows are getting a little tight.
Terribly tight.
And uh. Whether we have to go to the feds and say, look, we need to fix this. We need to figure out something quicker than, or sooner than later.
What we're, so in a real nutshell, what we're working on, what we're trying to get to. And I was hoping to have the one resolution here tonight for it. We've looked at lobbyists to work on the state legislature to help us, you know, get another access in and out. One of the lobbyists we've talked with that is a pretty good track record of working on uh. Helping with things like a bridge, uh, and we have a, a proposal from them. Their comment is, is uh, they felt they'd have a pretty good chance of getting help through the legislature. Providing we had additional funding to go with, you know, what we're requesting. We're uh, been working on Senator Cantwell's office. Uh, to see if she thinks there are, or there's a way that they can find the additional funding. We can get a positive answer from Cantwell's office, that she can pull funding, then we're gonna go to work on hiring a lobbyist to work on the legislature. Every city out there says we need a lobbyist, even the county says we need a lobbyist to help us with this issue.
Steve has a lot of bridge issues.
Sure, um, but right now we have one bridge in and out to the freeway, which is um.
A problem.
Well, it hasn't been until recently.
Oh, but it could be though.
But as we continue to grow our residential infrastructure, it's gonna get more and more hectic. And we really need a second egress. Um, I have always been a proponent of coming from Yakatah, straight across to Whitmore. And allowing people on the north end of town that extra outlet, as well as most of the ag traffic. And that would alleviate some of our downtown problems. Obviously, our bridge is older and it should be wider and all those things, but.
Have actual pedestrian areas.
Yeah, my, my major concern though is, is that. Had that bridge been blocked for whatever reason. It, it's a major delay, a major safety concern. It, it, it causes so many problems. The school district and their busing, um, the fire department, ambulance responses, fire responses.
Most people here is commutes.
Yeah. Every one of us works outside of this community for the most part.
You know, the uh, statistically. If you use Benton City, number of dwellings we have there in Benton City. Our uh, traffic count at the bridge should only be about thirty-five hundred vehicle trips a day. But we're coming up, we're probably now over thirteen thousand vehicle trips a day. The uh, Wazdon saying the driving apps are the number one drivers of it. Uh, because it's showing people the fastest way through is, you know, is coming up. Two twenty-five to two forty, now that they have the roundabout at two forty, it has really made our situation as far as traffic much worse.
Sure. Um, yeah, you got the Hanford traffic going north, you got ag traffic going south, out of town to the freeway. I mean, we've got this, this whole plethora of things going on. And I know the timeframe for these things to get in motion are tough. I know we've started the discussion on it. I think we just need to keep pushing on that, that particular piece, because we definitely need a, another exit.
We're not, based on everything I know, this is my feeling as a mayor, we're not, you know, trying to get Wazdon. At our level to lobby them to step up to help. We're not gonna get through it until we go all the way to the top of the feed trough.
Sure.
And uh, like one of the other lobbyists that represents WSU put it to me. He said, uh, there's enough money flying around there. Don't worry, Lynn, you know, if you get your act together and that, you'll be able to find funding. But I'm being told that if we have some funding from another source to help us, it will help greatly in getting this to the legislature.
Sure.
Could we look at inviting some of our state reps down?
We're uh, we're working on that and, and um. They're aware of it. Well, uh, we have two senators aware of it. We have our representative aware of it. One of the state legis- one of the state senators even complained to me about our traffic and our bridge and I'm going. Send me an email.
Give us the funding to fix it. Like I said, I, I just bring it up as a, a point.
It's very valid. David is so valid.
It is. Some even the county brings up during all of our growth meetings and things, this bridge plans.
It is a, it is a serious challenge.
It affects us in so, so many ways, both current and potential future and.
It's a limiter in every way.
Yeah. Yeah. You're like, you know, working on it.
One errant truck driver away from a two hour commute to work.
Well, it definitely will add an hour to your, your commute, but um, if you're going to where you're going. We probably get away with a half an hour if you head out around. Right? I, and you know, that's an inconvenience, but. When people look at a quality community to live in. They're not only looking at the amenities and the events and all those pieces, but they're looking at how bad is the, the traffic issue. And everybody who's gonna live in this community is gonna work outside of this community until we get some sort of economic base. Um, whether that be close to the city on the other side of the freeway, or if it'd be in the city on the north end of town, wherever that is. So. The, the, the end result is, is that. We wanna make your commute pleasant, not a hassle. And we need to do that.
But also on the economic development, if somebody wants to bring a business in. Most businesses involve trucks, deliveries, that kind of thing. That makes you more and less appealing.
Right.
Hey, thank you. Uh, we're going to uh, adjourn the regular council meeting. We're gonna have an executive session, RCW forty-two thirty-one, one, zero, one. I, and we'll start it at. You wanna start it at ten after the hour, like give us enough time? And let's allow fifteen minutes and have it over at by twenty-five after the, the hour.
Okay.
Okay? Did you have comments? Falling back harder, Benton City Council meeting, September second, two thousand twenty-five, do I hear?
Most of the, a second.
Senator I.
Senator I.
Motion passes, Benton City Council meeting.
Yeah, my mind went, this land is yours.
You wanna turn off the recording, please?
Here, I can tell you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.